As she came in the door, you saw a table that had postcards. If you have a question that you would like to ask tonight and have it addressed, please fill in that postcard so that we can review them and have the proper person address your question. If you wish to speak, we're going to allow each person two minutes. But there is a sign-up sheet over there that you will need to sign your name and then you would come to the front of, well, I guess, the gymnasium and address your comments to everybody here. You'll notice that the exit signs are to the rear of the building, to the front of the building there, should we have to evacuate. And the first thing on our agenda, which would all span and will give the pledge to the flag. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Tonight, we have a PowerPoint that is going to give you a lot of good information. Our consultants from the MRB Group, Diane Smith and Connie Sue, are going to present the PowerPoint. So if you ladies would like to start.
I didn't hear anything.
Good evening. My name is Diane Smith. I'm from the MRB Group. And my colleague Connie Salverton, I have been working with the village and with committee over the last several months to assist with the Village of Lyons dissolution, analysis, and plan. So we're here tonight to discuss the plan itself. But before we get started, the mayor asked us to share a couple of procedural notes to honor the intention that I can reiterate. The Village Board very much wants to hear your questions, comments, and concerns in this public hearing process. Many questions are anticipated. And it's important to the board that everyone get a fair chance to have their questions heard and to have their comments heard. And to that end, the questions should be submitted via card, as the mayor explained. And similar questions will be combined in an effort to consolidate and keep the information flowing. Comments, again, will be limited to two minutes per person. So, the agenda for tonight's presentation. The Village of Lyons dissolution plan, analysis, and alternatives. The presentation tonight will be comprised of the history and the plan process to date, the plan details themselves, and then the financial effects implications. In addition, we'll also discuss very briefly next steps in terms of the process defined by statute. So, let's talk about the plan itself. So the Village of Lyons is a full-service local government serving approximately 3,561 youth residents. It's located within the Town of Lyons, which is also served by its own municipal entity, serving an additional estimated 2,121 residents. A history of cooperative governance between the two boards resulted in several shared services which were highlighted in a study prepared in 2011. In 2012, petitions calling for dissolution of the village were submitted to the Village Board of Trustees, which initiated a legal process in accordance to General and Municipal Law Article 17A and resulted, as you all know, in a public referendum. So in November of 2012, village residents voted to approve the measure to dissolve the village and this initiated a planning process, which was also dictated specifically by statute. So, the Village Board appointed a dissolution committee to contemplate an optimal and implementative plan for dissolution and estimate its financial impact on government services and the resulting implications to taxpayers. The chart that Connie put Connie's back about, sorry, is, it depicts the timeline that the statute defines. This particular chart was published by the Carpenter Estate and it actually appears on the website that was created for this dissolution planning process. And the website is www.yonsthesolution.org. The chart literally follows the process from T to B, from beginning to end. And if, it's kind of hard to see this, but we're literally at the point about midway through that chart which says "period out," and that's tonight's public hearing. We'll come back to this for a quick review at the end of our discussion tonight. So, in order to contemplate the optimal delivery of services by the Town of Lyons following dissolution of the village, the committee initiated an examination of the current village services, which would then become the responsibility of the town to deliver. So the Board appointed the committee and then the Board, in subsequent months, selected the consultants. And then the planning process began in earnest in March. And the committee, at that point, undertook this analysis of the services that were currently being provided so that they could literally examine what it takes to deliver those services, what the costs of delivering the services are, and then contemplate from that data what would be an optimal delivery of services if the village did insist and the town were providing the services. So, in order to contemplate this delivery of services, the examination included a review of services and their costs, which included operational methodologies, the personnel requirements, the associated wage, wages, and the benefit costs, the equipment and the assets that are required to deliver the service, historic challenges and successes in delivering services, and the levels of service that are expected by the village residents. The result of this analysis was identification of different options for delivering services, including dissolution of the village, as well as options for alternatives to dissolution. Should this have to develop a curve, which reverses the decision to dissolve the village? The committee then selected, from these options, to choose what would be included in the plan. So, we will go over a review of the specific conclusions that were selected by the committee. The first has to do with delivery services. The least services contemplated by the committee would include a Town High Police Department that would include services provided by seven full-time equivalent, that's what FTE stands for, full-time equivalent employees, an additional six part-time employees. And the contemplated services did include staff reductions of two officers and one clerk. So, the narrative in the executive summary reads, "There will be a Town High Police Department consisting of seven full-time employees. An additional six part-time employees will be utilized. Public safety will remain a priority service and a level of service is anticipated to remain at moderate levels." So the next consideration is fire protection services. The plan contemplates fire protection to be provided by a fire department that is the result of a created fire district. So it contemplates first elimination of the village fire department, then establishment of a fire district. In terms of the actual delivery of services and the management and operations of the department, it recommended no changes to the current operations. It recommended that assets and liabilities, all the equipment, the real property that is utilized to provide services, would transfer to the fire district along with the liabilities associated with delivering a fire service. In other words, monies that are owed in order to provide those services. So, all the reserve accounts, because the village actually does have reserve accounts that are dedicated to fire department purchases, would be used by the determination committee to reduce any debt associated with liabilities that exist. So the mayor agrees, the village fire department will cease to exist and a fire district will be established. There are no recommended changes in staffing and operations for a level of service. All village assets associated with delivery of the service will transfer to the ownership of the district along with all village liabilities associated. The current village reserve account for the fire department will be utilized to reduce the debt prior to transfer to the district. That's what the committee approved. So the next area of service that is not related was code enforcement. Code enforcement will be provided, and one was only. It was contemplated by the committee that there would be staff reductions. The existing staff would be reduced from full-time to part-time, including elimination of a formal support staff dedicated to code enforcement and zoning. It was contemplated that administrative staffing already in place would be utilized to support and so the dedicated staff is part of the elimination. It was also determined that, and based on statute as it's written, existing village laws would be enforced, statute determines this, would be enforced for two years. So in other words, village laws, village property would be in effect for two years. The town would, during that time, review and then either adapt or adopt or amend the laws within that period as the town board sees fit to address the concerns of the whole town, which you now know is the former village. So, code enforcement and zoning. The section of the executive summary reads, "The dissolution committee anticipates that service levels can be maintained utilizing the reduced staff of one part-time code enforcement officer. Administrative support has been eliminated. Assuming that existing administrative staff in the town will support this function, the town board, following the dissolution of the village, will enforce existing laws for a period of two years or until such time as they amend or adopt any laws in their place." So the next area of focus was bliss. So court services will be provided, is contemplated in the plan, by the town court, which would provide all judicial services. This would be, the services would be provided by two part-time judges and one full-time clerk. This results in a staff reduction. It eliminates one part-time position. Also contemplated was the co-location of courts, of the court, with the current police department in order to eliminate the need for additional expenditures associated with court security. So by co-locating them in address for security. So, the mayor agrees, the town court will provide all judicial services, utilizing two new part-time court justices and one full-time court clerk. Court will be co-located with the police department in order to provide the presence of security without incurring the additional cost of dedicated staff. There are one-time building modification costs associated with this recommendation. And we'll come back to one-time costs later. The next area of focus, water and sewer. And there are no anticipated changes contemplated in the committee's plan in the delivery of water and sewer services. Also, it is determined that there are no anticipated changes in the operations of water and sewer. Because water and sewer are separate funds, they don't impact tax rates. They're not, the operations of water and sewer are separate from what the general fund supports. And so they're discrete funds. And therefore, the financial implications are actually huge. There is a crucial personnel cost shifted to water and sewer funds. And it was the recommendation of the committee that in terms of water rates themselves, the town board should actually look at the long-term operations of water and sewer after the decision and should analyze rates at that point in time because there are many factors that affect water and sewer rates. And it really should be its own independent analysis, separate from the dissolution analysis. So, the executive summary reads, "During water and sewer briefs, water and sewer funds are maintained separately from the general fund and aspects do not affect corporate tax rates. The funds support operational costs and are supported by the collection of water and sewer rents or usage fees. There is no change anticipated in the delivery of water and sewer services. It's anticipated that operations remain unaffected although several financial implications result from the shift of financial support for one position in priority to the water and sewer funds. The committee recommends the town board review water and sewer rates at a later time, independent of this analysis." So the next area of focus is administrative services. The committee anticipates the following changes. Administrative services are, will be provided by, of course, the supervisor from the town board, five full-time equivalent clerks and support staff, the town attorney, the assessor, health officer, and historian. That results in staff reductions of two part-time clerks, of course, the village board, and the village attorney. Further administrative services anticipate changes in the fund distribution. So all administrative personnel costs would be split across the general fund, water fund, and sewer fund. It's anticipated that the entire administrative staff would assist in the operations or the provision of services. And therefore, it made sense to the committee to split the administrative costs for those personnel across the funds in a distribution that represented the workload. So administrative staff according to the executive summary, administrative staff for this general governmental support function will be reduced. Also eliminated are the village's legislative positions. Changes to the fund distribution for personnel costs result in reduction in general fund expenses, but with correlating increases to the water and sewer funds. Contractual expenses for insurances, legal, and other services are anticipated to be reduced. Administrative services also anticipated, the establishment of districts. So establishment of an alleyway lighting district, a village lighting district, a village debt district, and a part town, if you will, referring to what is now considered a town outside of the village. So a part-town district will provide the town the means of attributing financial responsibility for expenses related to lighting, to former village debt, to employee obligations, and town retiree benefits. Districts are typically created so that municipalities can appropriately target, if you will, or task those users who cannot get current service specifically. So that's why the committee contemplated establishment of districts. Okay, the next area of focus, the public works department. By far, one of the most significant services that is provided. So, public works would consist, post dissolution, of an elected town high police superintendent, one full-time equivalent foreman, eight full-time equivalent mechanical equipment operators, that's what MEN stands for, and one full-time equivalent laborer. Additionally, the continued use of summer minors would support the staff. And there would be, based on what was contemplated by the committee, no anticipated changes in the services provided by this department. In addition, the committee, for the state of analyzing what these services would cost post dissolution, established that for cost calculations, light positions would be paid light salaries. In other words, moving the staff that exists at the village, moving some of those folks to the town. If there were two positions with two different salaries, for the sake of calculations, we should use one salary and we would use the higher of the two salaries to calculate costs going forward. So that was part of the agreement. So, public works, the executive summary reads, "There is no anticipated change in delivery of services, operations, utilization of assets, or staffing to provide these services. In anticipation of the town's decision to pay light salaries for light positions, cost estimates are based on that assumption. The committee recommends tracking of equipment usage post dissolution and as access equipment is identified, it be excluded from the inventory of assets in the manner deemed most appropriate by the superintendent and therefore the town." So, oh, also, all assets are going to be transferred. And that's why the termination will be in transit surplus coverage after the dissolution. Okay, so the next area of focus is employee benefits. "Representing the largest anticipated savings in operational expenses, changes in employee benefits result from the loss of status which will occur when village employees are terminated upon dissolution. In other words, when they're hired by the town, they will be regarded as new employees. And therefore, the town's contributions to their hospital and medical benefits will be capped at $5,000. This is part of the town policy that is actually published in the town's handbook for new employees. Staff reductions also affect this total, resulting in reductions in municipal contributions to social security, to state employment, and other required employee-related expenses." Okay, distribution of assets and records. All assets, that assets are real property, so property with its own equipment, and reserve accounts, in other words, savings accounts, if you will, that were established specifically to support service-related operations. Also, records that are in possession of the village. All of these things will, at the time of dissolution, be transferred in their entirety to the town with the exception of assets and records related to fire protection services. As mentioned earlier, these assets and records will instead be transferred to the newly formed fire district along with all of the village liabilities associated with the provision of fire protection. Village debt consists of outstanding liability for projects and vertical purchases, all the village general fund debt, again, not including debt associated with water and sewer funds, which are separate from the general fund. So we're talking just the general fund debt. All village general fund debt will become continued obligations of the village debt district. In other words, the district created that charges former village residents for the debt. And this district will be created by the town to contain these costs. Additionally, village obligations to retire groups as well as existing workers' compensation-related liabilities. In other words, obligations of the village that exist now to former employees, in terms of benefits, for instance, for former employees, as well as existing claim for workers' compensation that is, again, an obligation of the village. So these will become continued liabilities of the village debt district. And then, the last area contemplated by the plan, by the committee, was laws and agreements that are in place. General municipal law, Article 17A, provides a two-year period within which former village laws must be enforced by the town. During that time, the town board will review existing village laws and amend or revise or adopt those laws as needed appropriate. All village agreements that are in place prior to dissolution will transfer to the town although the town may desire to renegotiate those agreements in the best interest of town residents. And then finally, the plan did, was required to identify the risk of dissolution. And the committee took great means to carefully consider the time that would be required to transfer title for property and assets, leases, agreements, bonds that are in place, existing rents, bank accounts that would need to be transferred, vendor information, and agreements. These things take time to take care of and to record, document, and actually transfer the information in a proper manner. So the committee took this into consideration along with the principal identification and the transfer of records. Also taken into consideration was the amount of time it would take to complete renovations contemplated by the plan to co-locate the court with the police department and to transfer administrative functions, so relocation as well. So literally, the time it would take to implement the plan. The committee contemplated The committee contemplated an optimal timeframe to implement and recommended a dissolution date of December 31st, 2015. Okay. So, the next area of discussion for this evening is financial implications. Generally speaking, savings with the solution are generated by by certain areas that are apparently easy to predict. There is elimination by default of certain positions. For instance, a mayor's position, the board of trustees. Certain positions just disappear by default. Okay, so in addition to those costs that are eliminated by default, there are also contemplated changes in services or in the policies that affect costs. For instance, in this case, the health benefits for employees. So that has significantly contributed. But again, generally speaking, these are the things that affect the financial implications of the solution. Also is the shifting of costs. If you're going to shift costs from the general fund to water and sewer, for example, or if you're going to shift the cost of, say, fire protection to a district and make that a district expense. That's considered shifting of costs. You can't really call it savings because the residents would still need to provide support, financial support for the delivery of the services. It's just a form of that support will change from paying village tax to paying district costs along with the town tax. And then lastly, another significant financial implication is what's called aid incentive to municipalities. Literally, the incentive provided by the state to communities to dissolve. This ended up being a fairly significant amount. We'll come back to it later, but it ended up being $444,000 roughly for village lines and town lines. Okay. So we addressed these in the plan. Also addressed in the plan are one-time costs associated with the implementation of the dissolution plan. Things like the renovation, we'll come back to talking more about these, but things like the renovation costs. But also the cost of eliminating obligations or liabilities that might exist going forward. And again, we'll come back to that in just a minute. So, the financial impacts of the collective recommendations of the dissolution committee reflect the above considerations, all of those areas of the plan that we just went through one by one. The dissolution plan projects the anticipated annual savings of $504,929. Additionally, costs formerly associated with general fund expenses which have shifted to district expenses further reduce the annual impact on general fund from which the tax levies derive by $691,941. So these totals reduce the tax rate. This total further reduces the resulting tax rate but also creates a correlating increase in some district taxes. Property tax rates following the dissolution of the village will result in elimination of the village tax and increase of the town tax and creation of new district taxes. We actually have a little bit of an illustration here which talks a little bit about what typically happens in dissolutions contemplated very similarly to this one. In simplest terms, the tax impact could be shown in an illustration of the redistribution, if you will, of the burden for services. So this chart actually represents the tax base, the town line tax base. And you'll see if you look at the, you know, the little white dollar signs, town line, you have a fairly large, relatively speaking, a fairly large tax base, and you don't have a lot of services. So in that regard, and I'm speaking comparatively here, I'm also speaking generally. So when you have a larger tax base and you have fewer services, the burden is spread out over that tax base, and it doesn't feel like so much of a burden. The village on the other hand, if you advance, the village actually has a concentration, if you will, of more services and therefore more costs. So, if you then go into the next slide, what you see is that generally dissolution results in a redistribution, if you will, of service costs across the larger tax base. And so one of the reasons why you see such significant impacts on both former village and former town outside-of-village residents is because of that redistribution of the service costs. There are also some other financial implications which we're outlining here, especially the aid incentive. And they are tremendous financial implications. But generally speaking, you know, this is the question that we're most often asked. You know, what is meant by a cost shift? And why are we talking about cost shifts? Well, you take burdens that are unsold and then spread them out over a large group. Then that burden seems to be reduced. Okay. So, upon dissolution of the village, let's talk about tax rate because upon dissolution of the village, the total tax rate for a former village property owner will change. And I know this slide is a little hard to see, but part of the handout is the executive summary, and that should have included the tax rate. So part of the handout that you've just seen, you can see in. The tax tables are in the handout, and again, I apologize, there's a lot of information here, so I got kind of rammed into the small space. But I will look through it with you, literally, step by step. Upon dissolution of the village, the total tax rate for a former village property owner will change from $24.76 to $15.28, which is a reduction of 38%. This calculation includes the additional aid incentive for municipalities, municipalities referred to as aid. We also will go through the tax tables, if you will, for all the representative groups in the community without, and we'll do that in just a minute. Okay. Let me pull it up because I do not have a mispeak and I do not have the way of requiring glasses, which I don't have either. So I'm going to read the tax table. And I'll rephrase. Okay. So, the next slide talks about the impact, the financial impact for the current town outside-of-village residents, or park town residents. They would see the tax rate change. We just, um, don't hesitate to correct me if I mispeak here. So we have total town tax, a total tax rate of $8.97. That is the combination of all of the amount of taxes collected. It includes the town taxes and the required tax. So 8.97. Those individuals and those property owners would see their tax rate change to $12.85 per thousand. That represents a change of 43% increase. There are two other groups that are impacted, the current Rist Mill district residents. Those individuals would see their total taxes change from $9.45 per thousand to $13.33 per thousand. That represents a 41% increase. And then lastly, the proposed Alway district residents, which is a lighting district that would be created as a result of the dissolution plan. Those folks would see their total tax rate change from $8.97 per thousand to $14.42 per thousand. That represents a 61% increase. So those are the financial implications with, that includes the aid incentive to municipalities. In other words, the financial incentive provided by the state if you will. Now, there are some concerns about the aid that have been brought up in many discussions about dissolution. Aid is subject to the end of state budget process, and because of that, many people are arguing that its long-term continuation should not be assumed. It shouldn't be assumed that in each subsequent year, it's statute says it will continue on in perpetuity. But many people argue that because it's part of that state budget process, it could change at any time. And because it's such a tremendous financial impact, we were asked by the committee to also include the financial implications of the dissolution if aid were discontinued or if it were not provided. So we also ran the tax charts, if you will, without aid. So the next slide is run through what those impacts would be. The dissolution plan regarding aid for current village residents, the tax rate would change from $24.76, as discussed earlier, to $17.86, or a reduction of 28% instead of 34%. The town outside-of-village residents would see their tax rate change from $8.97 per thousand to $15.43 per thousand. So again, without that additional financial support coming from the state, there would be a bigger burden to be shared by residents. So that's why tax implications are what they are. So, that represents an increase of 72%. For Rist Mill district residents, their tax rate would change from $9.45 per thousand to $15.91 per thousand. That represents a 68% increase. And the proposed Alway district residents would see their tax rate change from $8.97 per thousand to $17.00, which represents a 90% increase in the rate per thousand for those individuals. There are one-time costs associated with the dissolution process. Several one-time costs are associated with the dissolution process and implementation of the dissolution plan. These costs include videotaping and preparation of dissolution committee meetings and town losses. Plan implementation costs include estimates for renovation costs, unemployment contributions, legal fees, audits, closing of the village books, insurances, and financial fees, as well as elimination of the liability associated with employees' claims for compensation or benefits earned but not yet received. The total one-time costs for the dissolution plan contemplated by the committee are estimated at $888,205. Also included in the plan are alternatives to dissolution. The committee determined in the course of analyzing governmental services that many of the options for post-dissolution services that were identified could in fact be implemented in the absence of the solution. And this committee's recommended alternatives to dissolution. So all recommended, all recommended dissolution plan options, which, don't worry, don't worry about it. All recommended dissolution plan options which can be implemented in the absence of the solution shall accommodate the committee's recommended alternatives to dissolution. And that was the determination of the committee. So this became the basis of the committee's recommended alternatives. The dissolution plan recommendations selected for alternatives to dissolution include elimination of the village corps, reduction of the code enforcement in zoning staff. Many of these recommendations, most of these recommendations here are that, a whole list of recommendations for the solution that we went through step by step earlier. Establishing of the fire district, reductions in staffing of the police department and elimination of the partialship, reduction of general government administrative support staff, co-location of the town and the village administrative staff, and the co-location of town courts with village police departments. And the changes in the salaries and the reduction in the costs of employee-related benefits could not be achieved by implementing alternatives to the solution. However, nearly every other benefit identified by the committee of the recommended changes in staffing, co-location of services, or the redistribution of support from water and sewer funds could be achieved. In addition, establishing the fire district shifts of related expenses from the general fund and therefore from the village tax rate to a fire district tax to be collected by the town in the same manner as the dissolution plan. So, so the financial implications of the alternatives are generated by there being no elimination by default of those village legislative positions that we discussed earlier. There would be no changes in services other than those contemplated by the committee. There, most importantly, would be no reduction in the health benefit costs that were associated with the transfer to the town's new employees. There would still be some shifting of costs as the dissolution plan mentioned. But there would be no aid incentive, which is a significant source of revenue totaling $440,000 annually. There would be some minor village revenue retained, approximately $45,000, roughly $45,000 in annual revenue that the village is eligible for but the town is not eligible for. So it's a minor amount of revenue that would be retained. And then, of course, there are still one-time costs associated with implementation of alternatives, just like there are one-time costs associated with implementation of the dissolution plan. So, let's go through the financial implications very quickly, I'm almost done here. So, the financial impacts of the collective recommendations for alternatives to the solution reflect all the above considerations. In addition, for use we receive annual revenues specifically from the Toldi's gross receipts tax of $45,000 would be paid. Substantial increase in aid incentive to municipalities, aid, estimated at $444,000, resulting from the village's solution not being received. The proposed plan for alternative projects and anticipated annual savings of $234,275. So this would be the savings from implementing the changes in services that were contemplated by the committee. Additionally, costs formerly associated with general fund expenses which have shifted to district expenses further reduce the annual which have shifted to district expenses, further reduce the annual impact of the general, on the general fund from which the tax levies derive by three hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars. So this total further reduces the resulting tax rate, but also creates a correlating increase in district taxes. Property tax rates following implementation of alternatives to dissolution will result in a reduction in the village tax rate, as well as creation of a new prior district tax. So let's go on to the next, uh, the next slide. So the last set of figures that I'll show you, and it represents in the handout, the very last column from top to bottom. Okay? So upon implementation of the recommended alternatives to dissolution, the total tax rate for a village property owner would change from twenty-four dollars and seventy-six cents per thousand to twenty-one dollars and sixty-four cents per thousand, which is a reduction of thirteen percent. For the, uh, town outside of village residents, the fiscal impact would be a change in property taxes, total property taxes, from eight dollars and ninety-seven cents, nicely total, uh, town and related, um, eight dollars and ninety-seven cents per thousand to eight dollars and seventy-two cents per thousand, which is a decrease of three percent. The former Brismill, uh, or the Brismill, uh, lighting district residents, um, the financial implication would be a change from nine dollars and forty-five cents per thousand to nine dollars and twenty cents per thousand, which represents a three percent decrease. And for the, um, newly created, uh, Alaway lighting district, those residents would see their, uh, property tax rate change from eight dollars and ninety-seven cents per thousand to ten dollars and twenty-nine cents per thousand, which represents an increase of fifteen percent. So, the, um, one-time costs that are associated with, um, the alternative to dissolution actually include some of the same one-time costs associated with the dissolution process. So the process costs, um, such as public involvement, um, the legal notices, the minutes, the video, all of those costs that I mentioned earlier that are associated with the solution would also be associated with implementing alternatives to the solution. Also included would be the renovation costs. There would still be legal fees, although there would not be fees associated with closing of the books, the, um, appraisals, or the, um, audits. There would still be some unemployment, um, costs associated with the one-time costs of dissolution. So according to, um, the final piece in the executive summary, several one-time costs are associated with implementation of alternatives to the solution to ensure fairness in the comparative one-time costs of the solution for those of implementation of alternatives. These estimates still include the costs associated with cooperation of this plan, such as videotaping and dissolution committee meeting minutes, legal notices, and local grant match requirements. Implementation of alternatives to dissolution results in one-time costs. Estimates include renovation costs, unemployment contributions, and legal fees. The total of the one-time costs for implementation of alternatives to dissolution are estimating to be two hundred and four thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars. So again, if you can see from the chart, um, that was, uh, put on the website, provided by the Department of State, we're still only midway through this process. Um, so you can actually go on to the next, because we were asked to address next steps, um, defined by general municipal law, or in seventeen, so defined by statute. What are the next steps? So the plan itself, which is being discussed in this public hearing tonight, can be amended, um, based on the comments and the input from you as residents this evening. Um, the village board must, once speaking all of these, uh, comments into consideration, approve a final dissolution plan within sixty days. That final plan, once approved, must be posted, um, again, for review, um, from, uh, or reviewed by the, the residents of Lyons. So following that review, unless a petition is submitted, the village would dissolve as planned on December 31st, 2015. If the voters choose to challenge the dissolution plan as it's been presented in its final form, so after the amendments, if any are needed, um, a petition to require a referendum must be signed within, uh, filed within forty-five days, um, of the, um, establishment of the final dissolution plan. In other words, once the village board goes, um, to establish to approve that final dissolution plan. And that petition must, um, include the signatures of twenty-five, no less than twenty-five percent of the registered voters of the committee. So, in terms of public awareness, um, the village has, um, taken great steps to make sure that people are aware of this process, of what, um, has taken place, of the committee's efforts. Um, the full plan, as discussed this evening, is available on the village's website. Um, it's also available on the website that was created specifically for this process, um, and that is, again, www dot alliance dissolution dot org. Um, we noticed that it's also been provided by the NURIS funds, and is still available at that website. And of course, a hard copy is available at Village Hall. And, uh, we encourage continued, um, participation by the public. So now, in order to accommodate everyone, um, again, I'm just going to defer to, uh, the mayor and to tonight's moderator and ask that, um, everyone please, um, follow, um, the procedure that's been outlined. Um, questions should be submitted via the carder, as the mayor stated. And, um, anyone who's interested in speaking should sign up so that they can be properly acknowledged and introduced. Um, it's, uh, my understanding that the needs is going to help anyone that I provided a card and a sign-up key, if they're interested in submitting a question and signing up to speak. So if you're interested, raise your hand, and keep that moderator signed up. And I think, I think that, uh, I think that concludes our presentation.